Will we please go ahead and call the roll?
Okay, calling the roll for the Energy Climate Change Environmental Justice Committee, Councilmember Nury Martinez, Councilmember Paul Corretts, Councilmember Paul Krikorian, Councilmember Gilbert Sadio, and Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell.
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and take public comment for item number one. Connor Everts, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead and come to the table. Stephen Johnson, Brenna Norton, are you here? Deidre Valencia, Deandre Valencia, I'm sorry. Is that... Okay, go ahead. We're going to start with Mr. Everts. Go ahead.
Yes, Connor Everts, thank you very much for this opportunity. I represent the Environmental Water Caucus, statewide organization who's been working on this issue, well collectively, probably about 40 years. So, I wouldn't want to say I told you so, but we always thought that the ag interest wouldn't pay their share and it would be put on the urban with no guarantee that we get the water. And the short timeframe we have for this discussion before it comes for a met at the MWD, I recommend passage of this motion and I thank you for it.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Mr. Johnson.
Yes. I'm, uh, in Councilmember Corretts's district. I was just going to say that I think it's perfectly in L.A. City's rights to find out as much they can with updates. They should get the update from LADWP. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenna Norton?
Hey there. Brenna Norton, Senior Organizer of Food and Water Watch. Our network was surprised by this hearing today and so unfortunately we did not get to notify the thousands of L.A. residents that have signed petitions on this issue, but they'll certainly turn out at City Council. Thanks Mayor Garcetti for opposing the tunnel tax last year, Metro Politeon and his great daily news op-ed, and thank you to City Council for the motion last year. Based on the motion last year, it stated if there was any more than 26 percent of the cost share, it should be a ballot initiative. So today I hope we look at an automatic proposal now that we're up at 50 percent, if not 70 percent of the share of the cost. Agriculture is out, so we are subsidizing water for ag. And I hope we look at stronger things, pulling out our funding. We should not be forced to pay for this project. Also important, counterintuitive, one tunnel is more expensive than two because again, now the agriculture players, the 45 percent lessons is out. So that falls on Southern California. It is shocking that we're considering putting this on the backs of ratepayers that I asked you to oppose this today.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you. Deandre Valencia?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Councilmembers. My name is Deandre Valencia and I'm the advocacy director for BizFed, the Los Angeles County Business Federation. We are a grassroots alliance of over 176 business organizations that represent over 390,000 employers who employ over about 3.5 million L.A. County residents. I'm here today to express our continued support for the California Water Fix. The business community understands that Southern California trillion-dollar economy is dependent on the delta and that's why we have done our part. We're promoting stormwater capture and reuse. We have endorsed ocean desalination. We've embraced significant conservation measures. We have supported sewage recycling programs and we support cleanup of polluted aquifers to make them usable again. But without the insurance of imported water to backstop all those measures, we cannot provide the stability and reliability that our economy requires. And saying that, BizFed supports the California Water Fix and the efforts of the MWD to bring about a reliable water source. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I've got additional speakers. Mr. Gary Tobin, followed by Bruce Resnick. Mr. Resnick, are you here? Go ahead. Come to the table, sir. Mr. Tobin, welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Gary Tobin with the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce, here to indicate our support for the California Water Fix. In fact, the motion that is before you is a very good motion until you get to the very last paragraph where it seems that you're leading towards a conclusion before the information. We know the leadership role that Los Angeles and the business community has taken in bringing water to this desert over the last 100-plus years and we believe it's important for Metropolitan Water District to continue to take a leadership role. It is their stewardship responsibility to make sure that there is water for the citizens of Southern California. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tobin. Go ahead.
Bruce Resnick, I'm the executive director of Los Angeles Waterkeeper. Thank you for this hearing and providing the opportunity to speak. Sorry, I had to run over from the county building. I just found out about this. So we're here to support your motion. I appreciate the leadership of this committee and the City Council on the issue with the California Water Fix. Interestingly, you heard me speak on this item as many of the other environmental speakers today and literally everything that we said we feared would happen has happened. The project has become more speculative. The city is going to be more on the hook for funding. Everything he said was going to happen has happened and yet somehow MET wants to take on more responsibility, put more burden on the ratepayers of L.A. We would urge, while we support the motion, even going further above and beyond the motion, there's a lot we can and should be working on for local water, reduce, reuse, recycle, restore, which could create more water, cheaper, more environmentally friendly, and create better green jobs in the region. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Those were the only single cards for item number one. I have multiple cards for Brown Eek, Ink? Eek, Brown Eek, are you here? That person filled out cards for items number six, 13, and general public comment. There's no one here by that name. Tara B., item six, and general public comment. There's no one... No one here by those names? Okay. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Herman Spindler. You have multiple cards and general public comment. Let's go ahead and give them three minutes to include two plus one. So two minutes for the items you've filled out a card for and then your general public comment. Go ahead.
So you see, Zev, item nine, we're talking about relative instructing the BOS or the MOU for the departments. We're cleaning up streets of L.A. in effort to provide adequate service, which is called homelessness. I sat in committees on homelessness. There's nothing being done for $1.2 billion except removal. No pothole fillings and compassion for people of homelessness. No one can identify a resource by our elected officials starting what the fucking asshole Mayor Eric Garcetti. And then I go into item number seven, another issue in homelessness. But let's stick to the law, requiring that the ADA and the Disability Act is modified under Civil Rights Act of 1964. Stop the fucking discrimination to clean the streets. I'm tired of people talking about how homeless people started the fires on the mountain. I'm tired of people saying the homeless created the mudslides. Fucking people need housing. Put $1.2 billion to get these motherfuckers to work. They'll clean up their streets. They'll pick up the dirty needles, all because you ruthless incompensiveness, homeless people can't make ideas better for the homeless. Then I go into item six. Six. Yeah, Jose Weisar is talking about building. He's talking about building off of First Street by the Gold Line on an oil refinery, exad refinery. Who knows what the fuck was there, but you can't build 10 years later when you built the Gold Line. Should have built that goddamn property when you had a chance. Now let's go into the issues by the courts. Those FBI agents are storming City Hall now. Those two FBI cars out there parked on the street, they're requiring local governments to deal constructively with Wayne Spiller and to give him his pre-settlement. What? No. Come on, Krikorian, all you takes is a blank check to get Wayne Spiller $1.6 million to get the fuck out of City Hall so he can buy that boat and sit up at the lake. As far as for myself, you know, dealing with incompetent, incoherent, and unconscious people like you who don't know shit about homelessness, I'm telling you, niggers, get me a home and I'll stay the fuck out of L.A. Get me Section 8, I'll stay out of L.A. Get me fucking housing and I'll spend $1.2 billion to take the shit with me.
Next and final speaker, Wayne Spiller. So you have two minutes to talk about the cards you filled out to speak on and then you have your one minute of general public comment.
Go ahead. Yes, so, item number one, we agree with the Chamber of Commerce. Fuck you, build it. So you charge a little bit more money. None of us have any money left anyway, so you might as well take the rest of it. Who fucking cares? Yes. Then we get to item number two. Board of Water and Power Commissioners, biomass energy. This is where you take the shit out of my ass and convert it to energy. And I like that. Cows do it. Dogs do it. And goats certainly have plenty of shit. And then you can convert human shit into energy. Imagine, you go to the bathroom and then you turn the light on and your same shit works twice. I agree with item two. And then item three, the U.S. Department of Energy, Nevada Power Company. Well, let's go and let's ask the FBI agents downstairs if you should be dealing with the federal government. No. Okay, that's right. So item number three is here by table, yes. Stay away from the feds right now, especially with that crazy Donald Trump. Number four, clean streets. Clean up needles, clean up shit. Most importantly, when you go to the park over at Griffith Park and all of the gays are done having gay sex, they drop a lot of needles and condoms, please clean it up. So when I'm over there and I'm running down with my bicycle and breaking my neck on your potholes, I don't fall under a drug needle and get AIDS like Mike Bonin, so we don't want that. Then item five, clean street backlog. Backlog my ass. All you have to do is spend the fucking money you can clean every street today, like on the 101. I saw people cleaning up shit on Victory. I saw people cleaning shit up all the way to Vermont Avenue. So yes, we're cleaning up this city. Hope on number seven, there is no hope when there's a cop beating somebody that's homeless. Remember, if you're homeless, you have a right to be a homeless person. Please stop beating people up for being homeless. They're just here trying to get a handout and unfortunately Jose Weisar doesn't have enough money left to give you that handout. So yes, we're here to clean up City Hall. We're here, and what's mostly nice, you see how Nury handles this meeting, everybody? She lets me speak. She's a good mommy. The rest of you assholes could learn a thing from her. Thank you, Nury.
That concludes public comment for the rest of the meeting. Let's go ahead and, without, if there's no objection, I'd like to move items number two and three on consent. Seeing none? Great. Okay. Let's go ahead and, can you please, let's go ahead and take up item number one. Go ahead and read that into the record. Thank you.
Item number one, motion Martinez relative to requesting Department of Water and Power to provide an update and review of the latest proposal of the California Water Fix and related matters. We have Mr. Richard Harrisick.
I am Richard Harrisick, the senior assistant general manager of the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. So I've been asked to give just a brief update of what has occurred since the last time we were here and the Metropolitan Water District took an action on the California Water Fix. A summary of what occurred since last October is that the state water contractors, let me just go back, just a brief introduction. So the Cal Water Fix, again, obviously is there to benefit fixing the Bay Delta water system and address issues of water security, ensure environmental protection, and reduce the risk from earthquakes and climate change within the Delta. Last October, the Metropolitan Board of Water, Metropolitan Board took action to participate on the two-tunnel project. And since that time, there has not been any known agreement reached with the federal contractors on their participation. Again, the participation on the project was supposed to be 45 percent from the federal government and 55 percent from the state government. So as a result of a potential 45 percent funding gap for the full two-tunnel project due to the lack of federal participation, the State Department of Water Resources announced in February a two-stage implementation of the approach. And that would have just one tunnel being built funded by and served by the state contractors. So one tunnel for just the state of California. And perhaps in the future, build a second tunnel for the federal contractors that they would be able to fund for that portion. On February 12th, the MET Board discussed a one-tunnel approach and also asked of its staff to come back because they wanted to know about the potential risks and concerns to pick up the remaining 45 percent of the federal share. So the MET Board essentially asked, what would it take if Metropolitan built a one-tunnel project all on their own or the state picked up all on their own? They want to know what the cost would be to Metropolitan. They also asked what would be the cost to Metropolitan if they not only participated on their fair share of the state project, a single tunnel, but also the cost if they decided to pick up wholly the second tunnel. So they have before them a number of questions to be answered. They are meeting at the regular board date next Tuesday and they will be taking questions as to Metropolitan's adjusted share for either a single tunnel or back to a twin tunnel where they would finance the second portion of that, variety of different financing arrangements, and how to meet those gaps in funding.
I've had one question and then I can ask the rest of the members to chime in. Can you talk in general terms and explain this two-stage approach and any conversations that are taking place at MWD and how that compares to our council's previous action?
Sure. So, again, the original proposal was for two tunnels at a cost of $17 billion and that cost would be borne 55 percent by the state and 45 percent by the federal government. Of that 55 percent for the state, Metropolitan is basically as the largest contractor in the state system on the hook for half of that. So if you just go by the proportional shares, MET's share of the original two-tunnel project would be $4.3 billion. The whole, the state's total share would be $9.2 billion. So both, the city, MET directors, and the council had concerns of how much that would cost the city and the shares. And the direction of both was that MET would keep to just its 26 percent share of that whole project. If there is just a single tunnel, it's not just half the cost because there's a certain amount that, infrastructure that needs to be built whether you have one tunnel or two. So actually, a single tunnel is less overall, but it's not half. So, again, a two-tunnel project was $17 billion and a one-tunnel project is $11.1 billion. And that would be borne totally by the state. So that whole concept was brought forth because nobody on the federal side has said that they want to buy into the project. And quite frankly, Los Angeles and really the South Coast region only needs a single So if we go to a single tunnel, MET's share will go from $4.3 billion to $5.6 billion. So that would be their proportional share of the single tunnel project, $11 billion. And then obviously, if they bring on and want to finance on their own the building of the second tunnel, then they'll bring on the remaining...
Let me interrupt you there, if I may.
Sure.
So what about the funding for the second tunnel? What happens there?
That's a good question, of which there is no answer at this point. And those are the, that is probably one of the most significant answers that's going to be hopefully answered over the next month. But for MET to take it on, it would go to their member agencies in some type of proportion and L.A. paying probably somewhere up of 20 percent of that.
All right. Thank you very much. As you all know, I've been concerned about what that means for L.A. ratepayers, whether that means that we're paying our fair share because we're also talking about focusing on developing more local water sources, so...
Yeah, I think you're spot on on that and that's really the question. You know, there's fair arguments of that the Delta needs to be fixed and California Water Fix can certainly do that, but there's a legitimate question whether we need two tunnels. And how that works really financially for the ratepayers of Los Angeles because at the same time, you know, we're going full speed on developing local resources. We're really to express purpose to get off of that sole dependency on imported water, especially through the state water project. And so those both have to work for us as we reduce our purchases from MET that we can't then see an outsized portion of ratepayers paying for that twin tunnel project.
Okay, thank you. Members, are there any questions? Mr. Corretts?
Questions and comments. First of all, I wasn't a big fan of this project before the possibility of actually restoring the Bay Delta was removed from it, so I'm less of a fan now. First question is, there were a list of requests by the L.A. City Council to MET. Did they adopt any of them?
From the first motion?
Yes.
I think a lot of that is still unanswered. I think that the basic question that was answered, would they stick to the 26 percent, which they did, that's what the board voted on.
So now they're talking about possibly going as high as 100 percent?
So, again, a lot's going to have to be answered when their board meets, but if they go to the single tunnel, which was proposed by the governor and the state board and DWR, MET is still on the hook for 26 percent of that. It's just 26 percent of a higher number. But there's also questions of not all of the contractors on the state side have also signed up for that. And so MET may want to pick up additional shares in that project and that would come at an additional cost to the MET itself.
My understanding, though, is that they would consider as much as 100 percent.
Well, so they, the board also asked staff to come back to pick up financing of 100 percent of a second tunnel. So you're correct in that. But there are other shareholders on, if there's a single tunnel for the state, there are other state contractors that would pick up their share.
Hopefully, it wouldn't wind up being...
Wouldn't be 100 percent, but it's, if they would go to two tunnels, it would certainly be far greater than 26 percent.
And obviously, big agriculture in the Central Valley is saying that it's too expensive for them. Not clear to me why it would be too expensive for them and not too expensive for us. L.A. Times reported yesterday that MET's costs will rise from $4.3 billion to roughly $11 billion. Do we think that's correct?
So, you know, back in October, they signed on to be 26 percent of a $17 billion. So that's $4.3 billion is what they at the board agreed to. If you go to one tunnel, cost $11.1 billion, that goes up to $5.6 billion. And then if they were to pick on, pick up the second tunnel, you'd basically double that to your number there, $11 billion.
And my understanding is MET's going to charge based on fixed charges and no matter how much water we use, we'll still be paying the same amount.
Well, I think that's a great question and that's really concern no matter how much is being proposed and how much MET takes on and goes to Los Angeles. And it's really at the crux of where we're in conflict between our local resources program and the twin tunnels there. And by that, I mean, if MET pushes off a lot of the cost on the fixed charges, then there's disincentive there for Los Angeles ratepayers to use less water because MET's going to press, push on us a fixed charge. So we would obviously like to see more of a commodity-based charge for that so that if Angelenos use less and end up purchasing less from Metropolitan, that they would pay less.
And also, I think it's anticipated that we'll have reduced diversions of water over the years due to sea level rise and environmental protections with or without the tunnels. So it's certainly a big question to me whether we should be putting a dime into this or whether we shouldn't be focused on more reliable local resources, which we really can count on in the long run and I believe will be more cost-effective in the long run. So I would certainly encourage that to be our position and not to support even the single tunnel proposal.
Any other questions? Seeing none?
Madam Chair, just one quick question.
Go ahead.
And that is, after the MWD board reviews the analysis, what's the next step after that?
So what I understand that will be coming to the MET board next week is answers to many of the questions that have come up here today. They will be voting in their April meeting on their two-year budget and basically whether to finance a two-tunnel project or the single tunnel project. So that's probably the first thing that's going to be coming before their board.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there, seeing no other questions, I'm going to go ahead and move that we adopt this motion. Are there any objections? Seeing none? Thank you. Let's go ahead and take items number four through nine together. Can you please read those into the record?
Shortly, Madam Chair, we'll do. Item number four, motion Martinez/Sadio relative to physical regulatory challenges experienced in delivering services under the Clean Streets Initiative. That's four. Number five, beer sanitation report in response to motion Martinez/Krikorian relative to instructing beer sanitation report with options, recommendations to further address the Clean Streets Initiative backlog in the current fiscal year. Number six, BOS report in response to motion Weisar/O'Farrell-Price/Harris-Dawson relative to instructing beer sanitation report in regard to the backlog of Clean Streets L.A. encampment service requests and related matters. Number seven, beer sanitation report relative to the status and implementation of homeless outreach and proactive engagement teams and on related staffing issues. Number eight, sanitation report in response to adopted budget recommendation relative to metrics used to measure the success of the HOPE teams. And one more.
Is that, you've got one more?
Yeah, one more. Number nine, motion Harris-Dawson/Martinez relative to instructing beer sanitation related city departments to provide quarterly reports on the status of the Clean Streets L.A. program and efforts to provide adequate services. That completes those items, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. So we have our friends from sanitation. So just, I don't have very specific questions, but I do want us to get to sort of what, how have the programs been rolled out over the past two years? Talk a little bit about some of the successes, accomplishments, and best practices. Have we learned anything? What are some of our challenges that we face moving forward? And what's the department's ability to address requests in a timely manner to clean up our neighborhoods? It's sort of what I'm looking for in your talk and then I can open it up for questions.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Councilwoman, Chair, good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Khalil Garios. I'm going to just give you a quick, brief background about the program in general and then from there, we can just share with you what we have accomplished so far in the program. The program overview, we have our service teams in the program. We have one Operation Healthy Street team. It both covers the Escudero and Venice. And then we have six HOPE teams. Two were added in January, mainly this is 5611 protocol enforcement and ADA and intense outreach for the HOPE teams. And also, we have five Clean Street L.A. teams, also one added in January. Mainly, those teams are charged with homeless encampment cleanup, mainly for protection of public health and safety, and then also in charge... for protection of public health and safety, and then also in charge of the, the illegal dumping, services and cleanup illegal dumping. And also, as part of the teams, we have the Clean Stat team. This particular team is charged with going all across the city and then grading every single quadrant and street segment in the city. We started that, we are now in the eighth quarter of indexing of, of, of the city grid. And also, we have the trash receptacle service team. We have currently 3,700 trash receptacle throughout the city that we service on a daily basis. The OHS Escudero, we service 35, 35 blocks on two-week cycle. And also, we have on every other Tuesday, the, we clean the El Pueblo, Arcadia to Cesar Chavez. And on Friday, the OHS team is, does the cleaning activity at Venice. The four HOPE teams, they're assigned to all the four LAPD bureaus, Valley, West, South, and Central. Two more teams added in January, one citywide, and this particular team, it will be assigned on the, what we call the chronic areas, mainly the freeway, 10 freeway, Hollywood 101, and 110 freeway corridors. And then the last is the LA River and Tributaries. Those areas, we divided the LA River in five zones, and this particular HOPE team is in charge with the, the enforcement of the ADA and everything that's to do with the, the HOPE team enforcement in LA River boundary areas. The homeless encampment cleanup under Clean Street L.A., I want to share with you a little bit some of the numbers that we have data for you. Starting with illegal dumping service, between January 2017 and March 2 of this year, 2018, we had 10,500 service requests that we received, and this averaged about 750 service requests for legal dumping per month. We serviced every single one of those, and the average service was about nine days to service every single request. 95% of those requests were closed in 21 days or less. As far as the homeless encampment cleanup, from April 2016 to March 2, 2018, we, with a total of 31,460 service requests, we received, and 25,514 were closed. We have a pending backlog of 5,947. With the 2017 average monthly service requests that, that were received, open 1,659. However, we only closed on the average of 1,374. So as you see, the average number of service added to the backlog is about 250. From there, you can see that the number of service requests that we receive every month outweigh our resources available to service them. So it's going to keep on increasing as we, as we go further. The average response for every authorization that, that we do is about 21 days. Lastly, the bulky item service request, between January 2017 to March 2, 2018, we received 700,600, 700,600 service requests. 98.8% of those requests were completed on the scheduled date, usually on this, on the, the resident service day. So as, as a summary, just to share with you, we have accomplished so much as far as the, the environment quality program. However, as, as, as you can see, our resources are not enough to just be able to continue servicing all the service requests that we're receiving on a monthly basis. I want to have thanks to that.
I want to just focus on the, the HOPE teams, and I want to acknowledge our partners in LAPD and LSA for working together. We did their presentation this morning at the Police Commission, and, and we talked about the collaboration. I think the city is working very closely, trying to work together to address this issue. What we're dealing is with the symptoms, by dealing with the cleaning of the trash and the encampments, et cetera. I think, appreciate the council's leadership and the mayor's leadership in addressing really the root issue, which is the housing, shelters, the storage. As our general manager always says, is our goal is to get out of this, this business if we can, because really, it's, it's not something that we want to sustain forever. But I think as, in the meantime, I think we're addressing a, a, a chronic conditions. This 2017, I want to just give a number, is, is we removed 13,000 tons of waste. So citywide, 13,000 tons of waste.
Mr. Herman, it's your first and final warning. You have nothing to do with Mr. Gilserio. Just, I'm just warning you now. Go ahead.
13,000 tons of waste, which in addition to all the human waste and the needles and everything we're doing, the HOPE teams working with LAPD in 2017, as you know, that's the first year we started the four teams. We responded to 1,500 calls, processed about 1,500 tents, removed about 500 tons of waste, and about 4,000 needles and sharps. Working with LSA and LAPD, we made about 16,000 contacts, and with the homeless individuals and referred about 3,600 were referred to services. We are looking through the collaborative efforts through the mayor's CENTCOM and many things, trying to figure out how we can do things better. We're looking at, at, instead of authorizing, having an authorization for the cleanup, every homeless encampment required an authorization, which requires the outreach as a condition, posting before we clean up. And then we have to go through the process of identifying health hazards, and then storing the materials for 90 days that are clean and personal belongings, and posting where they can pick up, the homeless individual can pick up the information. To be more efficient in deploying our resources, we have sanitation in five-hour yards put in temporary storage containers to allow the folks, for example, working in the valley, to put this personal belongings in a storage container in the valley instead of coming all the way downtown, to avoid the travel time and make us more efficient. So we have five locations in our yards that we put in place, that we're using and working with, with Chris List and LSA to process these and put them through the inventory. We're also working through a process to reduce the number of trash on our streets and doing this good neighbor concept. In El Pueblo, for example, we installed two sharps, containers, receptacles, and, and we've seen a huge difference. Last week, there was zero sharps on the streets of El Pueblo, and 200 were in the container. So that tells you that there's things can be done as we become smarter. And as we are going out trying to deploy our resources, we are now looking at a, an area, a quadrant, and we would go in and we authorize a location for cleanup, we would define an area and have that be outreach by LSA, and then we would go in and post that. And we will go in and every authorization within that quadrant will be addressed. That makes it a little more efficient. You know, we're trying to be not only effective, but also smart in deploying resources. But I think what Khalil mentioned, which I think is, we are seeing an increase of service requests. In 2016, we had an average of 847 service requests a month. In 2017, it went up to close to 1,700 service requests a month. So that was a huge increase. Our, our effectiveness and what we're able to deliver went from 677 a month in 2016 to about 1,300 a month in 2017. But we're still a gap. The, the demand is much larger than the ability to deploy, even with all the efficiencies that we employed. So I think we need to continue dealing with this issue as, at the same time, dealing with this, the, the housing, the shelters, and the other long-term services and, and social services, medical services, to help all of us resolve this in, in Los Angeles as a holistic solution.
Lisa Maori, Chief Financial Officer, to discuss one of the proposals that's before you, which is a package mostly of overtime to allow us to make more inroads on this. As has already been mentioned, as Khalil said, our average in 2017 was almost 300 more requests came in than we were able to actually service. As we make things more efficient, we're chasing a moving target, which is that the service requests coming in continue to increase. Looking at the January, February time period of 2017, we received 2,300 requests. The January, February period of this current year, we received 3,900 requests, a 70% increase. Frankly, I'm a little surprised we're only running at a 300 request deficit a month. So the proposal we have before you is to look at the existing resources we have and see how we can stretch them more. So the main focus of this was on overtime, and looking at having our Clean Streets teams rotate through on Saturdays, so that every week, two of the teams would work on a Saturday for the next 13 weeks. The reason why we're only doing two of our five teams is frankly, this is very physically and mentally demanding work. If we had all five teams working every Saturday, we would start seeing fatigue set in, which could lead to more accidents on the jobs, people making poor decisions, or frankly, people that are exhausted and get sick and end up then calling in Monday and Tuesday, which means we're not actually gaining anything. Another part of this proposal is to look at overtime during the week. One of the things that's been frustrating for us and also for our constituents is if they see us out on a site, we're cleaning it, but we have to demobilize in the afternoon because we've used up our full workday, we need to get back to the yard, and we're this close to being done. So it's frustrating for our constituents because they think we're not doing the job. For our folks, they, depending on what their schedule looks like the next day, they either have to remobilize back out to that same location, finish the job, and then move on to the next location, which uses up extra travel time. Or if they're fully booked that next day, we might have to leave some work undone and just jump to the next job. So the ability to have a couple of hours of overtime during the week, we wouldn't plan on a single team working two extra hours of overtime every day. It would be available depending on which team could best use it to get some more work done, and to make us more efficient and not have these repetitive remobilizations to the same location. The third part of our plan is to take one of our existing new HOPE teams and augment it. A HOPE team is not intended to be a cleanup team. They're only there to deal with immediate access issues, remove things that are public health hazard, make sure the right of way is clear so people can access their homes and businesses. That's been another area of frustration, is people see a HOPE team go out, they do what they're able to do, but there's still litter and debris or, or personal belongings around that they can't do anything about. We've got some of our folks who work at our Lopez Canyon facility, where we had the fire last fall, that's curtailed some of our operations there. They've been involved in the, the cleanup of that work. Right now, they're at a period where they've got some availability. We can assign them to one of these HOPE teams to augment it. So in addition to just the 5611 enforcement, there's additional staff and they can do a little more of a robust cleanup. So we think this is a, an effective way that we can take what we've got, not add brand-new authorizations to it, but reassign some staff, do some strategic overtime to get additional hours. And we feel for that request, we can close almost an additional 2,000 service requests before the end of the year, at a cost of about $815,000.
Madam Chair, just to add to one of the motions, I think, that was introduced by you and Councilman Cricorian, we reviewed some of these obstacles and some of the challenges we're looking at, and what can we do, something different based on your motion? There's two areas that are really becoming a huge issue for us. One is bridge overpasses, and where homeless encampments are growing inside the bridges, and it's a threat not only to the individual, not only to the bridge, but also to the people crossing under. We believe there's something that needs to be done. And, and we are looking at options right now on, on how can we, one, secure the area so you cannot, you cannot get into these areas, but also making it illegal, and, and maybe go in and working with the city attorney's office to augment 5611, to clearly state that this is considered to be a trespassing, and from a safety perspective, we need restrictive use in that area. But the one that really, I think, that struck us especially, you know, looking at some of the, in the Juanita Alley, close to a school, and how we need to address the schools in the communities, there's 160 schools within 1,000 feet of a homeless encampment, based on the data we announced yesterday. That's out of 1,000 schools, 1,087 LAUSD schools. We think, I think it's like similar to what was done with the cannabis ordinance, what was done with the California Gun Free Act, the Zone Act, that we have an Penal Code, the drug-free zones, the, the vending zones in terms of what can you sell around a school. I think we can work with the city attorney with your concurrence and the council's concurrence and the mayor, to go out and, and come up with an amendment to 5611 to make it illegal, to have a homeless encampment within 1,000 feet of a school, to allow safe passage for the students and their families. I think that's critical. I think we still can deal with the other locations outside, but within 1,000 feet of a school, based on our review, I think it, it makes a lot of sense from its safety, from providing safe access, because in areas we see that kids have to go into the, the street itself to cross, and which makes it very dangerous, and have been exposed to conditions that are unsanitary is also not, not, not good. So with your concurrence, we, we will talk to the city attorney and hopefully draft something that we'll bring back to you as a draft ordinance to look at that and create a safe zone around schools when it comes to homeless encampments. I think that's a balance between safety of the individuals, but also, and protection of the students and their families, and the same time while protecting the rights of the individuals, and minimizing what we have to do around the school.
I'm stacking through your presentation. Members, are there any questions? Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you. Thank you so much. In, in relation to Juanita, that's in the 13th District, and with what you're going to pursue that you just outlined, Adele, maybe chicken with LAUSD as well, because LAUSD chose not to participate in securing that alley. When we presented them with the option and the adjoining businesses, they balked at a very reasonable cost to secure that alley, and LAUSD had a hands-off approach. So in certain instances, I would imagine that they're going to need to lean in on this issue as well, as opposed to choosing not to participate, because that certainly is the case at Juanita. We've since met with the school again, but I introduced a motion last year to secure and gate the alley, and rather than participate, they chose to call the media, saying the city isn't doing enough about the problem. That's, you know, a separate issue that I have with LAUSD. A, a lot of the questions I have, though, are, are with, with sanitation and personnel, and I'll fire through them really quickly, Madam Chair. If personnel, if someone from personnel--
Someone hear from personnel? Please--
Thank you. I think it'll go more quickly. It's in relation with, to the positions, the environmental compliance inspectors, and that, those are the positions that you're talking about for overtime permission, et cetera. And I, I know that the motion that I introduced last May was out of a, a strong concern that the positions hadn't been filled so that the HOPE teams could be successful. And I've, I've spoken with Personnel and Sanitation about this ad infinitum, and I, I see progress. And I want to congratulate the departments for making progress, and, and I, I'm seeing success in the program now, which is wonderful. However, we still have positions open, correct?
That's correct.
We have 60-some-odd positions currently occupied, but we have about 22 more that need to be filled?
That's correct.
All right. And so what I kind of want to focus in on is in relation to the vacancies and, and the classification as it relates to background checks, to get these-- as it relates to background checks, to get these positions up and running more quickly. And so, the question would be for both departments, if both departments prioritize for these high, you know, high-need positions, to fill all vacancies for this ECI classification as outlined in Sanitation's report, how soon could that happen?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Autumn Kwimjen, AGM with Personnel Department. I oversee the Background Investigations Division. The only challenge we would have right now, we don't have any kind of backlog in backgrounds, and this is the type of position that could also be sent out to our outside vendor, so it could be processed relatively quickly, and at the moment, we have no backlog, so we could, we could assign cases to the outside vendor as soon as we receive them. The only challenge I would foresee is getting too many in a bunch. So, for instance, if the department tried to fill all 22 positions at once, that would be a challenge, but if we could do it in even small waves of seven to 10, we could get it done in probably next four, four-and-a-half months.
Okay. And so, that would be going in concert with the peace officer status background checks, which is a priority?
That is correct, that is correct. If they sought to hire without that particular job position, so without the arrest powers, they could start much, much earlier.
Has there been any thought in separating the two, so someone does abandon homeless encampment cleanups and then all other cleanups? Have you thought about separating the two for expediency in terms of background checks?
It's very difficult. Most of the people will come in and they go and start working, and they go through extensive training. They require, has this material training, all these things that have to be done while background check is being done. Depending who passes background, who doesn't. If the individual does not pass background, there's limited work that they can do, but they can do some work. So, it's critical that we get as much people in background check as possible, so all of them will go through background check, because not everybody will pass background check.
And Adele, they're already hired, correct?
Yes.
And then, the background check is concurrent with them being hired and trained?
Exactly. And then, what we, we are on a separate path, working with Personnel and the CEO's office, is looking at what can be done differently, creating an entry-level class where they can be on a 12-month trainee kind while they're coming in, and so, we're in that discussions on the side.
There are, and getting them out to the field more quickly.
Exactly, and then, while we do that, we can afford that background can be done, and if they come in and they don't pass background, they know that they may not be employed with us. At this point, if they don't pass background, we kind of have to figure out how to fit them into the process and keep them inside. But one thing that we also are working with Personnel is how can we make the exam a continuous exam and the search process? So, basically, we want to have the exam open at all times. It's very hard, this is not a very attractive job.
It's stressful.
It's very stressful.
It can be demoralizing.
So, it's, so we're working through a process on the incentive process of people working in that kind of environment, but I think to attract a, because out of that group that applies for this exam, only few are willing to participate in this kind of work, because there's other jobs somewhere else that can do the same class, but do something in the office, which does not require them to be exposed to these conditions. So, what we're saying is we need to have a bigger pool of staff coming in, candidates coming into and applying, so we're asking that we work with Personnel and the Civil Service Commission to allow us to have the exam be continuous, that means open at all times. People can file in and put their application at all times, so we can have enough pool that we can continue filling in. We're having a huge attrition, people are leaving to different departments.
That was a question of mine. Is there, are there a large pool of applicants?
There is, but a lot of them are not interested in this kind of work. Very few have that kind of, and honestly, I mean, we don't want everybody doing this work, because it takes special people to do that work. And, but we need to make the pool bigger so we can get enough people to fill these positions, and we're seeing a huge turnover, that we need to have that pool always available so that we can fill it in.
I'm sorry, do you think these conversations will lead to maybe creating a new classification? Possibly? I'm not suggesting that you do it, but in terms of making.
I think, I think based on the discussion we have, Lisa and I went to a meeting with Personnel and CEO and others, I think there's a potential of creating a, a, a sub-classes or within the same class to create a different grade, that if you are working on this type of work, you'll be a grade three, for example, versus grade two if you're doing this kind of work. We're still in discussions. I mean, we believe in mobility, and if it's the same class, it provides a lot more mobility and provides a bigger pool for people to move into these positions, but we need to figure out how we can incentivize people to come in. How can we ensure that folks that have done the extra step, have done the extra certification, have done the background check, can really see an award and they are rewarded for the kind of work? So, I think it's a little more complex then, but I think I see a lot more openings, and we had good dialogue recently, and I want to acknowledge Personnel for all the great work they've done in helping us, but I think this continuous exam is critical for two classes, for that class and the solid resources, truck driver.
Mobility is one thing, but turnover is another, and it's so incredibly costly, and ask any private business owner that, and that is really harmful, so anything that can be done there? And what is the ratio of those who don't get an approved background check? How common is that? Is it less than 10 percent of those?
Pretty high.
It's high.
I would say, my collection was almost like 50/50.
So, that's another issue. So, we have about 22 positions out, so we're going to get to over 80, but we're at 60, and then there's a 50 percent roughly background check failure, so that is also a problem. So, where I'm going, Madam Chair, is just the focus that we need on hiring and keeping people in those positions so that we see the real results on the street. Thank you.
Any, we have Mr. Sadio and then Mr. Kuratz.
Hi, Mr. Kuratz.
Do you want, do you have any questions?
I have a question.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Kuratz.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Mr. Sadio. Few questions. One, in the wake of the Skirball Fire, which turned out to be generated by a campfire in the hills with an encampment, I did a motion to address the high-fire danger zone areas, and I think the best strategy is to encourage, discourage encampments in those locations and to possibly relocate them more aggressively than we might in other parts of the city. Is there an update on how we're approaching this? What have we done to take steps in this direction?
So, the Fire Department has established a task force, including Sanitation, LAPD, and the other departments involved. They've done the initial survey across the city and identified, I believe, 72 locations in the city that have, in high-fire zones, that have homeless encampments. A location can be one encampment or can be up to 10 encampments. We actually worked on a deployment strategy, and that we started last week, to deal with the city-controlled properties, and that's another strain on the resources. So, what we, we're trying to figure out how we can get it done with, just to get going because of the risk and the danger. So, we aligned the River Hope Team, the LA River Hope Team, with addressing these homeless encampments in the high-fire zones. It happens to, most, in most cases, they align, except in some outlying areas. So, we kind of started the process of using the HOPE Team and try to augment it with either Recompare's staff or whatever we can do to address this issue. We started last week in Zone 3, which is the Hunger Wash, and in one location, it took us three days, two-and-a-half days for one location. I think it was like 10 encampments, I'm not sure what the number was, it was a large number. And we addressed, I believe, what I'm supposed to get a report tonight for a meeting tomorrow on this issue. This week, we moved to Zone 4, which basically takes it down around the LA River, close to CD 13, CD 2, and CD 4 around the horn, and that's, we're working on it today as we're speaking. I think we'll get a good handle, I think, once we do the first five weeks or four weeks, we'll know exactly what our capacity is to deliver on this. It just, it just takes a lot of collaboration, not having the resources dedicated for this, and the extent, what you see on the street from the survey from Fire is different when you get there and look beyond the street. You see a location, but when you go in, it's a lot, lot bigger. So, there's signs that have been posted for no trespassing by the Fire Department. LASSA has done the outreach across the board. The majority of locations are empty, there's no human person there, person, so what we agreed to do is actually to leave a note, if the outreach was not, team was not able to do the outreach, to leave a note that this is illegal and do the outreach and for us to come in and do the cleanup. I think we should be able to give you in about four to five weeks, a good report. We'll have a meeting tomorrow with the task force, and what Lisa brought up to have the overtime, you know, help us a little bit, it will provide us a little more ability to be more nimble to absorb some of the additional work that's needed in these areas. So, we're doing well moving forward, it's a massive work, and, but I think we were able to strategically deploy using the strategies that we have existing in the LA River Hope Team, and we will try to address the outlying areas that do not fit, for example, in your district, Councilman. We will have that addressed on Fridays and have that be addressed in different schedules. So, we'll communicate with you on a later time on the schedule with Fire Department and LAPD.
And as you point out, it's not always as easy to spot them from the street. In fact, the one that started the Skirball Fire was at a location intentionally behind bushes and trees so that they weren't, wouldn't be spotted. As far as just doing it on LA City property, do we have any kind of an agreement yet with other entities like Caltrans and MRCA for us to have the ability to go on their property and act and vice versa? Do we have any ability to do that?
MRCA was part of the team, as part of the task force, and they have already addressed the two locations that they had homeless encampments in their area. With Caltrans, we have a meeting with them tomorrow to have to start a dialogue on collaboration. They are responsible to address this issue, as Fire have sent, the Fire Department has sent notices to all property owners, both private and public. We're focusing, as part of this task force, on the city-owned properties, but the Fire Department is tracking the response from the other agencies, but I know MRCA, they reported to us in the last task force meeting that they removed the two locations on their property, but that's something I think we will get an update hopefully by tomorrow.
And also, I've heard there's some difficulty in terms of communication between the LAPD HOPE teams and sanitation, that sometimes they'll go and clean up a site without following the preauthorization protocol, but then won't let the Bureau of Sanitation know about it. Is that a problem? Has it been a problem? Are we doing anything about it?
There's always an education process. We take these protocols very seriously, along with our partners in LAPD and LASSA. We have a great relationship with Commander Troy, who is here, and his staff and his team. We work closely with the different HOPE lead officers and lead sergeants. It's, you know, we always critique if anything doesn't work. I see it now, we have really have done a great job working together. I have not seen the collaboration better than, you know, this is the best I've seen it in terms of collaboration, working together, communication, so I truly believe that we are working together on addressing a lot of these issues, and I think we're working very closely, and I think we're following the protocols.
Good, glad to hear that.
Mr. Sadio?
I have a few other questions. I'm happy to go on to Mr. Sadio.
Yeah, because we're running at least almost 30 minutes behind schedule. We have a second joint meeting that Mr. Wuskey and or Mr. Bonner have joined us.
I'll ask one other quick question, and then I'll go on. What is LASSA doing to physically engage the homeless? Because I know they have to visit three times before we're supposed to clear an encampment, and some of my field deputies that talk to the homeless say that LASSA's never come to their location. So, how active are they in doing that, and is that delaying our ability to clean up encampments?
My feeling is that they're doing a good job of doing it, and they do outreach, because the authorization that we issue for a homeless encampment requires them to sign off on it, LASSA has to sign off. So, from my perspective, they are acknowledging and signing off that they've done the outreach a minimum of three times at that location, and there's, you know, I believe they have additional resources they're deploying, they're receiving additional resources through Measure H, and that's something I think that LASSA would be more equipped to answer this, but from my perspective and LAPD's perspective, they're going out, they're doing their job, but the lead staff and the managers at LASSA would provide you more detail to the specifics of their strategy. They have a comprehensive plan and areas, they went through it today at the LAPD Commission meeting, and that's something that's critical. One thing that we're asking them to do is not only just outreach regarding their services, one thing that we want them to really shift into is how can you, how can you be a good neighbor in your neighborhood as a homeless individual? What can you do better? You know, don't trash your area, don't do this, you know, make sure we all are living together as a good neighbor. So, I think we want to do more with them, and they're open to kind of expanding the area, and that's something that we want to do more of, that collaboration. But from my perspective, they are really working very closely with us and doing a good job.
Mr. Sadio?
I have a question.
My question is, the magnitude of the challenge, is there a thought that we would restructure with respect to both scheduling of our work schedule and scheduling our, and the restructuring of our efforts? And that's tied into this question of staffing up, making sure that we have enough boots on the ground and that we're available. I mean, this is not a modest challenge that confronts us, and the increase is evident in the ability for us, although we made incremental progress this morning, the ability for us to get commitments to build in communities remains the greatest challenge. Then, in the, within that context, it's just going to create more and more work for all of you, and so, it's a question, do we need to restructure, both in the amount of time and the, when people are available to do this work, and the number of people who are available to do this work?
And we are working through the process right now with, as part of the budget process to come to your committee. Mr. Krikorian, I'm looking at the chair of the committee, through the mayor's office, through everybody about the resources that are needed, that's something that will be discussed in next budget. We're also looking at the time scheduled deployment, that's something that Khalil and his team is looking at, to ensure that we have the most efficient deployment, both days, weekend coverage versus day coverage, hours, to align that with LAPD and others. So, we're looking at all these things, but you're right, I mean, at the end of the day, it's going to take, you know, troops on the ground to do the work.
Okay, okay, I'll jump over. Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Did you have another question? Mr. Krikorian?
Couple of things, thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, thank you for coming back with a budget enhancement request. I, and I don't mean this facetiously, but it's, I appreciate that compared to where we were last year, when you were doing your best to try to respond to council member requests and getting beyond the limits of our budget, and so, I appreciate that we're doing it in the reverse order now, that's important. And Madam Chair, I'm very much supportive of moving forward with this. And Madam Chair, I very much supportive of of moving forward with this, but I I would ask that because there isn't a source of funding identified, that the enhanced budget request also be referred to to Budget and Finance until we can identify where this money is going to come from.
That's part of my motion.
Great, thank you. So a couple of quick things. First, why is a background check required for for these positions? And why is it apparently as expensive, as extensive as for a as a peace officer?
Sure.
The integrity of the individuals looking into personal belongings of the homeless individuals, that's that's.
I guess what I'm getting at is who requires that? Is there some source of law or are we doing that on our own?
The the it's in the class, I have to go back and remember exactly what's the requirement. There's a a this E C I is is a peace officer status. And that was put in as a peace officer status. So so it's required because they do investigation of illegal dumping, all that stuff. So it's.
If it's if it's identified as a peace officer, I get it. Okay.
Councilmember, it's it's a public officer and it's by municipal ordinance?
It is by municipal ordinance. It's not pursuant to state law identifying.
That is correct, and they have limited arrest powers as well.
Okay. Okay, good. Is there any issue with having an ongoing continuous list for these positions? I heard we're working on it with personnel. Why can't that just be done?
I believe I believe there is a current list, but I'll I'll defer to my colleague, Mr. Lemus, to answer that.
Okay.
Good afternoon. That is definitely a possibility. We would have to discuss with the department what their future hiring needs, take a look at the candidate flow, how it's coming in. As soon as we get a request, we can start working on that and figure out the details.
All right, great. So let's not discuss it anymore. Let's just do it. Can we? Can we just do that? Okay. Is there a position? Are there any positions that are part of the Hope teams or that could be part of the Hope teams that could appropriately be filled through the targeted local hire position program?
There's a requirement of certain education that that's needed. So it's it's we I think when you do the entry level, we may be able to do that in the in the modification to the class. At this point, there's a minimum certain education that is needed on chemistry and some science that's needed that requires them to have a certain college education.
I would just ask that you have a close look at whether there are any positions that could even that could supplement the work of those professionals that could be done by an entry level employee under the targeted local hire program. And then finally, I look, this 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 service that that is being provided by the Hope teams is invaluable. It's critical to all of our neighborhoods. It's also really, really expensive. And of the 16 plus thousand homeless people that the Hope teams encountered, a little over 20% are even referred to services. And as much as I like having my Hope teams available, you know, in my district, I think we also do need to take a 30,000 foot look at whether or not we're getting return on investment by moving people around from one place to another and only 20% of them even getting a service referral. So and of those 20% who are even getting a service referral, I don't know if there's anybody in the city or the city county partnership that are monitoring what the outcomes of those referrals are. But my guess is a tiny fraction of those referrals result in somebody getting off the streets. So we're spending a lot of money to move people around and to clean up their detritus. And I'm not sure if we're getting as much return on investment by doing that as we would be by providing shelter or direct service outreach or investing in housing or providing job training or any number of other things that are part of our menu of remedies for homelessness. So I just I want to put that out there because I was kind of surprised to hear that statistic in the report. And I hope that although this isn't exactly this committee's jurisdiction, I hope that as we move forward on this, perhaps we can find out, you know, what success rate we're having in actually impacting the problem with those referrals rather than just moving people. So that's that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Prieto, can you inform the committee of what action the Homeless and Poverty Committee took on items six, seven, and eight?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Well, I guess you can't do it from there. So why don't you come to the table and do that? And there's a reason why I'm asking you to to inform the committee what homeless and poverty did on these items.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. So in essence, what the two committees did is they concurred with the action of the Bureau of Sanitation report, and they amended it to include two additional actions. The first action, the first additional action was sanitation report on the necessity of a 12 month background check and present strategies to expedite hiring with a specific classification in 30 days. The second amendment was sanitation report on reevaluating the process when it comes to encampments. It was very general in that regard. We could work with the Bureau, the members on that committee to determine the scope, specific scope of that recommendation.
Okay, very well. Okay, members, I'm going to go ahead and move that we adopt item number four. And for item number five, I'd like to instruct L A San in consultation with the C A O and the C L A to promptly transmit an additional report which identifies a source of funds that can be used to fund overtime costs to help address a Clean Streets backlog of service requests and refer that matter to Budget and Finance Committee for prompt consideration. I'd like to also recommend that items six, seven, and eight concur with the recommendations of the Homeless and Poverty Committee. And if we can, again, Mr. Prieto, you just you just mentioned it, get as specific as we can on the second recommendation. And then the last item, item number nine, I would recommend that we adopt. Are there any objections to any of these recommendations? Seeing none, that will be the order. Going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you, Mr. Buscaino, Mr. Bonin, you guys were both on time. We ran a little bit past the hour on these items, but we are scheduled for two o'clock to begin our joint meeting. So, Mr. Prieto, did you want to come back up to the to the mic?
Yeah.
You want to move over, Mr. Krikorian? Perfect. Okay, so I want to call to order the joint meeting of the Energy, Climate, Change, and Environmental Justice Committee and the Trade, Tourism, and Commerce Committee. Welcome, members, to the joint committee. Can we please ask? Can we please ask for roll call? Mr. Herman and Mr. Spender, thank you very much for your time here. You've been warned before. You can exit the room. Sergeants, can you please ask these two gentlemen to leave? You've been you've been interrupting this meeting since we started. You continue to shout and whisper and answer phone calls during this meeting. You were born, Mr. Herman. Thank you. Thank you very much. Your puppet noises, your.
I want to stop so you can have a private comment.
Thank you. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Have a good day, guys. They continue to disrupt the meeting. I just want to make it clear, they continue to shout and call out council members and disrupt this meeting. They've been doing that all all afternoon. Thank you, guys. Okay, we're going to go ahead and call our joint meeting to order. Can you please call the roll?
Sure.
Yes, ma'am. For the Energy, Climate Change, and Environmental Justice Committee, Councilmember Martinez.
Oh, here.
Okay. Councilmember Corretts.
President.
Councilmember Krikorian. Councilmember Sidio.
Here.
Councilmember O'Farrell.
Present.
Okay, for the Trade, Travel, and Tourism Committee, Councilmember Buscaino.
Here.
Councilmember Bonin.
Here.
Councilmember Krikorian.
Okay, thank you very much. There are no public comment cards for either of these items nor general public comments, so I will go ahead and close that. Let's go ahead and take up items number 11, 12, and 13 together. Can you please read those into the record?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Item number 11, motion Corretts, Bonn, and Blumenfield relative to requesting a problem water and power in the Office of Public Accountability to report in regard to power reliability issues and outages at the Los Angeles International Airport and ways in which the Department of Water and Power proposes to reduce the likelihood of further related power outages. Number 12, Corretts, Bonn, and Blumenfield relative to requesting D W P and the O P A to report in regard to the current and future power demands of L A X and the current and future power reliability issues and objectives at L A X and related matters. And number 13, motion Corretts, Bonn, and Blumenfield relative to requesting D W P in collaboration with L A W A to provide an action plan with implementation timelines for infrastructure upgrades that ensure that L A X has adequate power capacity to prevent intermittent power failures and related matters. Madam Chair, a report was just submitted by Department of Water and Power right before prior to the start of this meeting, actually the prior meeting, that you have that now before you.
That last one was a Bonn and Wesson motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Corrections of Bonn and Wesson motion on the number 13.
All right, thank you very much. Can we go ahead and call D W P and L A W A to the table? And both Mr. Corretts and Mr. Bonn have both have motions related to the power at L A X. So you can go ahead and briefly give us an update on those, and then I will defer to Mr. Buscaino on questions of L A W A as well as the makers of the motions for further discussions, okay? Who wants to begin?
L A W A, I want to start. Good afternoon. Marty Adams from Department of Water and Power. We're here to discuss the motions that you have and what we've done in the time since the last series of outages involving L A X and to let you know the progress that we've made in conjunction with with L A W A and and how we've worked together very closely to try to remedy the problems that they've seen. The report, I apologize, you just received a write-up today. That report just came in Friday from our consultant. And so so what you're seeing is hot off the press and and new to us as well. So there's a number of things that we're going through in terms of recommendations to look at, but that's that's fresh stuff, so I apologize that you not not able to receive it earlier than that. But we have Eric Hartman and Marvin Moon from our staff who can talk in detail about some of the efforts going on in regards to power supply at the airport. You know, there's a there's a number of issues, both within the airport property and on our side that we're working on. There's a lot of long term fixes that have been looked at, but at this time, we're also looking very closely at short term fixes so we can make sure that the existing power supply becomes more reliable and and also that the airport is able to manage through changes in voltage and and other things that typically happen on a power system so that together we can make sure that we minimize the incidence of outages until such time as the airport expansion and the power system rehabilitation takes place.
So if you'd like to go ahead, Marvin. I'm Marvin Moon, Director of Power Engineering, and I'm very pleased to be here. I'm going to be talking about the first two motions because they're directed at Water and Power. The first one asks for a report relative to power reliability issues and outages at the airport and ways the department proposes to reduce the likelihood of further power outages. The second one talks about a report on the current and future power demands of L A X, the current and future power reliability issues and objectives at L A X, and ways in which D W P can prioritize working with the airport to develop reliable power and mitigate current and future power outages. Of course, the department considers L A W A as a and L A X as a high profile premier customer, and as such, power reliability is a major priority for us as well. And improving reliability requires a concerted effort both by Water and Power and L A W A. L A D W P's responsibility focuses on the distribution, operation, contingency schemes, and quality of the electrical power delivered to them both on and off campus, while L A W A's responsibility is on the integrity of behind the meter facility, the equipment, switch gears, and control systems that are designed to ride through typical abnormalities which occur on a power system. It's understood that some power quality issues are inherent in the power system and cannot be avoided. However, D W P is committed to minimize these number of power reliability incidents at L A X. Now, with regards to capacity, L A D W P has sufficient capacity to meet the existing L A X loads. Currently, it's around 60 megawatts. And L A D W P also has a capacity to meet the planned L A X increases, which is approximately 120 to 140 megawatts by 2024 with the ongoing projects that we have going with L A W A. On reliability issues and outages, D W P reviewed the L A W A recorded facility disturbances. They kept excellent records of what they've seen since November 2012 through June 2016. That's a four and a half year time period. And it and then we correlated their events with our events if we had a correlation. And what we found was that there were 83 disturbances recorded by L A W A. Note that a disturbance could may not be just it could be an outage, it could be a momentary blip, it could be voltage fluctuation, but basically something turned off on L A W A's property. So and so the findings are this. Of the of the 80, 83 disturbances, 47 of them or 50, 58% of them were incidents that correlated with events on the department's system. So that's approximately 12 per year spread over five circuits. We have five circuits that serve the central core of the airport. 28 of those incidents, or 34% of them, were incidents related to L A W A facilities on their side of the meter. And eight, eight of those incidents were were it was undetermined what the origin or cause was. So looking at the 47 D W P related incidences, 20 of them included a lot of distribution issues. We had balloons. We had four instances where balloons got in our overhead lines. We had vegetation issues such as palm fronds falling into lines or trees. And we had five, six bird incidents where birds got into the lines or equipment. We have had five vehicle accidents and a switch malfunction as well. On our underground cables that serve the airport, we had two instances where underground cables failed. And and we had five vault instances. And in our substation, there were three instances where the protection or the the system that turns off the circuits had some issues. So these incidents were typically resulted in partial power outages or momentary power anomalies, which required resetting critical L A X equipment such as elevators, walkways, escalators, baggage equipment, security equipment, and computers. So L A D W P's proposal to reduce the likelihood of further related power outages first centers on communication. L A D W A has a D W P rep which constantly works for them. Our engineering team meets with their staff on it every other week for their projects and other related reliability issues. And L A D W P and L A W A manage to meet on a monthly basis to address issues in short term and long term plans and developments. On planning and reliability, L A D W P's distribution, planning, engineering, construction, and maintenance teams have taken steps to review the system protection, the system configurations, the station maintenance, and the infrastructure replacements. The prompt areas are that that come up are addressed immediately. In addition, L A W A and L A D W P have been working on a new planned substation to supply the L A X campus. This, there is an M L U that we developed and for this bulk power station, which will solely benefit L A W A's campus. This is this facility is designed to not only handle the increased load that they're anticipating going from 60 to about 120 or 140 megawatts, but also provide much greater power quality to the facility. The substation and related cabling would be about $100 million, $120 million project, not counting the transmission lines to get to the site. Water and Power has also hired a collaborated with a company called the Electric Power Research Institute, or E P R I. Both L A W A and D W P hired these these this power quality organization to evaluate mission critical equipment both on the L A X side and on the D W P side. For the D W P side, they were looking at this new plant facility to make sure that it's going to do exactly what we think it's going to do. And the results are, we just got a draft of that report, and the results are very, very, very encouraging. Their study is called a area vulnerability study. In addition, we also contracted with another company called the Electric Power and Energy Consulting, or E P E C, to review L A D W P's plans for improving power reliability at the airport. And they and they've also done a comparison of several major airports, including Atlanta. This concludes my comments on the first two motions.
If I could add one thing Marvin talked about.
If I could add one thing, Marvin talked about where we are right now with the system and where we're going in the future. One of the issues right now is, you know, we have a pre-World War II power grid in that area, and the airport is on, in the distribution system, which means it's also impacted by other, other customers as well. And so one of the things we're trying to do is get the airport more isolated on its own power supply, so that other, sometimes you may have a hotel or somebody who has an outage, another big customer, that could cause a voltage spike or a voltage drop in the system that has, currently, you know, kicked off equipment at LAX. And so we're trying to find ways around those issues. About a month and a half ago, there was an outage because we had wires that had come in contact together associated with turbulence from the, from jets going by. And so it's a problem that occurred many, a few decades ago in the past. It occurred again. And so there are, there are a number of different issues. A lot of them have to do with the wiring and, and overhead wires. We have undergrounding program which will help LAX area, but it's not an instant fix because it takes a long time to underground. We have an underground corridor on Century, but we've pretty well taxed out the capacity of that, so we're looking at some additional undergrounding. But if we get wires underground, it will help with many of the kind of incidents that we've seen in terms of rodents and vegetation and balloons, jet turbulence and things like that. So there are some things that we're doing, but we are trying to harden the system as we go and, and again, harden the protections and the protective equipment that we have in place to make sure that we reduce a number of incidents. Interestingly, if you look at the numbers on that report, there's something called a SADI and a SAFI and some other indexes. In short, what that report shows is that the system supporting the LAX area is, is no worse, in actually many cases, better than the power system that we see in the whole city of Los Angeles, which in most cases is better and more reliable than the power system anywhere throughout the country. The difference that LAX is, it's an extremely sensitive customer and critical to the city. And so the power supply there is not much different than anywhere else around, which in our case, which is very good, but, but there are certain sensitivities. And the folks from LAWA will explain things that they're doing to harden their side, to make their, their equipment more resilient to typical voltage variations and that sort of thing in the power system. But the overall power reliability is actually very good, except we have, again, an extremely critical piece of infrastructure that needs to have even a higher grade of power service.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bob Gilbert, Robert Gilbert. I'm the Chief Development Officer for LAWA. And with me today is Jeff Smith, our Chief Engineer related to Power and Utilities. We're here this afternoon in response to not only the first two motions, but also motion 13, in which the committee asked us to, requesting both DWP and LAWA to provide an action plan with implementation timelines for infrastructure upgraded to ensure that LAX has adequate power capacity to prevent intermittent power failures and power redundancies. My colleagues at DWP have already outlined some of the, of the issues that we have addressed in trying to ensure that we have a much more reliable power distribution system. Thing that is necessary for all of us to understand is that we do have very sensitive equipment associated with our airport. And these are pieces of equipment that we cannot, that cannot be tied to a UPS and have an assurance that those pieces of equipment during anomaly will not pop offline and then have the long, sometimes extremely long time to reboot in order for us to be able to operate at an airport. Our belief is, as has been stated, that with the distribution system that we have currently, it's old, there are issues with its reliability, there are issues with its vulnerability. So we are seeking, as has been said, to have a dedicated power system, distribution system, that we have an MOU that we've been working diligently on for the last year almost to finalize. We believe that we're almost there, and we're waiting for DWP for their final review and approval, in which we want to get to our board by the first week of April. This will provide us the dedicated and reliable power that we don't have currently. Now, there are always issues that one can do to help to improve reliability. We have been working diligently with DWP to address some of these. As has already been stated, the EPRI group, which we contracted to give us an idea of what we can do on our campus to help reduce and mitigate some of the outages that we have. And we do have an inordinate amount of outages when I compare them with some of my airport friends around the country. So we did take that EPRI study. We received it last October, and we've already started implementing some of the ideas that they, that they put addressed, as was stated. We don't call it hardening because that implies something a little different, but we are doing things to correct some issues that we have internally. And that program is underway, and we are very serious about it. But the problem still exists for us that when we do have an anomaly, and the anomalies we cannot do anything about at LAWA, that anomaly starts with, in this case, the distribution station in, we can't do anything about that. When that anomaly happens, no matter what type of reaction that we have with our systems, there is going to be, there are going to be some reductions, some closures, some interruptions that dramatically affect our airport, from vertical and horizontal conveyances of our passengers, to gates, to delays of flights. And we're trying to get to a point where those are minimal and not something that we can almost count on, on a pretty regular basis. So the things that we have done on the short term, as I said, we've addressed the EPRI study. I also contracted with a power reliability firm to give me more ideas on what we can do to help us be less vulnerable to the anomalies. In addition to that, we are hosting a energy summit, a reliability summit later this month, co-hosted by DWP and LAWA, to bring in some of the best minds in the industry related to power reliability, to get ideas from them. In addition, we did go to Atlanta, and we listened, watched and got advice from them on the catastrophic issue that they had. And we brought those lessons learned to our airport. Fortunately, in a way for us, they had all their eggs in one basket. Even though it was a very good system, they were all in one basket. And when they had that catastrophic event, it basically interrupted, well, closed all of their power for 11 hours. Fortunately, if we had a catastrophic event like that, or unfortunately, if we had a catastrophic event like that, then it would take us a lot more than 11 hours to reconstitute our airport, which is unacceptable. I'd like to turn it over to Jeff Smith now to address some more details related to our short-term, long-term ideas and what we're doing to reduce our vulnerability at the airport, those things that we have control over.
Thank you. My name is Jeffrey Smith. I'm the Chief Airports Engineer at LAWA. I want to just make one comment relative to the record of outages that Marvin referred to that occurred between 2012 and 2016. There were a number of outages that we recorded that were related to activities by LAWA on our campus. And we have taken some significant steps to better coordinate our construction activities, our shutdown activities, to mitigate and minimize what we do to ourselves. But the big issue for us here is the, the exposure that we have to outages that we can't control, the dips in voltage that have impacts to us. Marvin mentioned that our critical systems can drop offline when there's just a simple dip in voltage. What might be seen is maybe a blink of the lights will shut down computers that don't have UPS connected to them. All of our vertical and horizontal passenger conveyances, escalators, elevators, moving walkways, will become interrupted and require manual restart for escalators and for moving walkways and for many of our elevators, which requires staff to be deployed to restart those, which takes time. In the recent outage that was referred to here earlier where lines slapped together, it took the airport nearly two hours to bring all of our conveyances back online. Now, computers reboot and, you know, the screening machines reboot, and, and those things can be brought online within minutes to, you know, hours, within minutes to maybe 30 minutes to 60 minutes. But each elevator that stops and doesn't, doesn't restart automatically has to be manually reboot. Each escalator requires a manual restart. And so it just takes time, and it takes resources each time one of these anomalies occurs. We've referred to the EPRI study that was done, and there were a number of recommendations that came back to LAWA. Some were very simple fixes. They found that some of the UPSs that we do have installed need better maintenance protocols to ensure that they are functional and operating. And they recommended that maybe some additional UPSs would be appropriate on some of our critical equipment. But one thing that they did identify in, especially in our conveyance equipment, was that there are components within those equipments that can be changed to lessen the sensitivity to any type of a voltage dip or spike. And so we are systematically going through our systems, identifying those component pieces, and as we replace those, that will allow our equipment to be more resilient in the event of a dip. We also have from them a recommendation to apply a new IEEE standard for equipment that will allow the equipment to be more resilient, which will be applied to new equipment that we purchase and install in the coming development program that we have. And then as we replace equipment, will be held to this higher standard. In addition to that, LAWA has been, has a program, and this really is in response to how, how do we respond to the type of outage that would occur similar to Atlanta. We have a very active and proactive program in, in maintaining, testing and operating our emergency generators that are there by code in each of our terminals to provide for emergency power for firelife safety, as well as generators that are there for standby that provide additional power for the operation of terminals. We're looking at how we might expand the use of generators in any resiliency scenario where we may be exposed to an extended outage. We have been working with, as, as has already been mentioned, with DWP to develop an MOU that will ultimately allow us to construct and put in place a new substation that will give us a higher quality power from transmission systems. And, and that will allow us also to ensure that the future demand that will become from our LAMP program and from other development that is planned will be properly satisfied with appropriate redundancies and backups. And so just to summarize and in conclusion, LAWA is deeply concerned about our continued exposure. As, as the Chief Airports Engineer, I've been very pleased with the coordination at the staff level, on the technical level, as we've tried to address these technical issues, to come up with a plan that will ultimately provide an infrastructure that supports the airport in the future. But in the interim, this exposure continues to be of concern. And so we are looking for intermediate, short-term and intermediate solutions to protect the airport from this exposure that, that we feel coming from the grid. Thank you.
Important to note that that new substation is going to take some years to do, to complete, and the concern is related to the next three to four years while we try and get this new system onboard. And there's a lot at risk associated with the reliability that we have today.
And before I turn it over to Mr. Buscaino, I was thinking to myself, have we, if we had a modernized LAX decades ago, I wonder we would be having a different conversation today?
I'm sorry.
If we would have modernized LAX decades ago, would we be having this conversation today?
If we had put a new substation in years ago, we wouldn't, I dare say, we would not be having this discussion today. However, years ago, we weren't anticipating seriously the development that we're getting ready to go, that we're starting to go through now with the LAMP program, with the terminal programs that are onboard. So the...
But there was also countless delays as to why we didn't modernize the airport decades ago as well. There's a lot of things that happened in between. So it's just a rhetorical question. Mr. Buscaino.
That's a righteous one. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for taking us. A combined joint committee here with our T3 Committee, appreciate the report. You know, power reliability is, is critical to the overall operations of our airport. And when the airport shuts down, our local economy takes a hit. And when the airport shuts down, our passenger experiences will continue to decline. So I'm happy to see a pathway forward that the items before us, the action items before us, and these items before us, the motion, the council motions to help us understand what the problems have been and a pathway forward to fixing them. And in a time where the airport is investing $14 billion in bringing innovation, sustainability to our airport, we can't afford a power outage. We are, we're just, we're about to approve an all-electric automated people mover. Can you imagine if that shuts down? So really appreciate both the airport and DWP coming together collectively. This is in my, in my discussions with Deborah Flint, this has been a key issue for her in the overall operations at the airport. I do want to commend my colleagues for bringing forward these motions to set a pathway forward so we, again, to understand this problem and also avoid future outages at the airport. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Members, are there any, Mr. Bonin? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for, Mr. Buscaino, for calling the joint committee. I'm always relieved I'm not on the committee overseeing DWP because the, the level of detail the conversations get into makes really important stuff sound really boring very quickly.
We'll take care of this.
God bless you guys for doing this. I just want to underscore some of the stuff here because in, in the detail, the scope of this problem gets easily lost. The situation we were in with the power reliability issues and the failures at the airport was scary a year ago. It got terrifying when Atlanta happened, and I'm not feeling a whole hell of a lot less scared today than I was after Atlanta. The, the report, actually, the one that just came in the other day, actually scares me a little bit because I don't know that it sufficiently appreciates the, the impact of, of these power failures. Though not ideal, existing LEDWP power reliability does not portend a catastrophic power outage for LAX. Partial power outages and momentary power anomalies disrupt LAX operations, but they have, to date, never completely shut down LAX. Well, that's something that someone in Atlanta probably wrote a year before the disaster in Atlanta. Just because it hasn't happened with, with a constantly aging infrastructure doesn't mean it isn't going to happen. And even when it does happen, I mean, the things that get shut down that need to be reset, elevators, walkways, escalators, baggage handling equipment, computers and security equipment, those last two things, security equipment and computers. I've seen the aftermath of a shooting at this airport. We've known for over a decade this airport is a, is a target of Al Qaeda. The, the idea that security could be even momentarily impacted at this airport is a scary one because knowing how aging our infrastructure is, somebody could target the infrastructure in order to decrease the security and, and cause destruction and havoc there. The, the other issue with the, the computers is when the computers go down, the, some of the airline mainframes go down. And that causes delays really quickly here, but because we're a hub and the gateway to the Pacific Rim, that causes ripples around the country and around the world pretty quickly. So, I mean, if we have a disruption here that, that disrupts the, the computer... that disrupts the computer mainframes, it may be small from our perspective of what was actually impacted in terms of the number of circuits and all that, but the impact to Los Angeles, to the global economy, to the reputation of the city is huge. I mean, Atlanta took a big, big blow, and we don't want that here. So I'm glad to see the stuff that's in the recommendations. I think that's good. I do want to see us do quarterly reports on implementation because I think it's important to move not just diligently but urgently. But I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about what we can expect to see a year from now. I'm just going to ask about five things and see if you think these are things we can get to a year from now. Be able to quantify a measured reduction in power grid anomalies at the airport as a result of aggressive action by the DWP and LAX. A year from now, we'll be able to look back and say we've seen a significant reduction.
Councilman, I can assure you that from the Lawa standpoint, the measures that we have taken and are taking, those things that we control, you will see that there will be a measured reduction in the impacts of those anomalies. We can't control the anomalies, but we can try and mitigate the effects of the anomalies. And we have highlighted those issues that we can impact, and we're taking aggressive steps to ensuring that that happens. But those things that we can't, we have no control over. But from our perspective, those things we can control, you will see a dramatic reduction, if not elimination, of those impacts.
And from the water and power side, what you're asking for is very measurable, especially working with our partners here. And to that extent, we are doing similar measures on our distribution system to try to minimize the outages we've seen in the past related to overhead distribution, underground, and substations.
Okay. Number two would be viable options to improve power reliability to the LAX campus, having been identified in the energy summit being organized into an implementation plan. Is that a year from now something that's doable?
Would you repeat that?
The summit being held, the ideas coming out of that, prioritize, and then come up with an implementation plan.
Absolutely. That's the whole purpose that Lawa initiated this summit, was to, there are better minds than ours that are out there. There are the academia, there's the industry standards, and we're going to take all that we can get out of that, both DWP and ourselves. And those ideas that we feel are viable, we're going to put an action plan together to implement them as quickly as possible. And this time next year, you'll get a report on where we are with that action.
This is a co-hosted event with both of us, and we both have the same objectives, to walk away with tangible things that we could act on.
Excellent. Third of five is the CUP cogeneration system deficiencies, that we define them, get specific with them, and come up with corrective measures?
I'll speak to that item. We are in the process of bringing in expert professional services that can do an assessment on how that cogen system is currently operating, what some of the deficiencies are that prevent it from operating what I would call an island mode, and then the corrective measures, both in equipment and infrastructure, to the central utility plant that would allow that system to go forward. And I would expect that whatever corrections are identified will be in progress a year from now.
Okay, that's good. Fourth, a campus microgrid assessment, will that be complete and will recommendations be in progress?
Yes. Similar scenario where we're bringing in outside experts to look at and assess our campus and look at how we can leverage a microgrid within the campus to allow us to distribute power within the campus as opposed to simply having excess power go back to the grid.
Okay.
And two comments on that. That is one of the topics of our Power Reliability Summit coming up, to look at options on that. In addition, as we develop our MOU for the big substation, that's one of the business models we have to look at. You have to go down certain paths to do one or the others, but that's part of that MOU that we're working with them on, on the future substation option.
Okay. And the final thing is, in this universe of stuff I'm about to describe, if you could let me know what would be done a year from now. The RSX design-build contractor has been selected and mobilized. The DWP design requirement documents are nearing completion, and the environmental entitlements have been secured. How far in that will we get a year from now?
We are actually on target in all three of those areas.
Oh, okay.
And with the expectation that the MOU will go before our respective boards in the month of April. That puts into place-
Both DWP and BoR?
Yes.
Yes, we attempted to have a joint board meeting to have those approvals, but scheduling turned out to be too difficult. So we're going to go separately. We're going to go the 5th of April to our board, and I'm not sure when DWP is going to their board, but hopefully it'll be in April, so that we can consummate that agreement and move forward with those three items that you reiterated a couple of minutes ago.
And I would just say that the MOU formalizes what actually is occurring behind the scenes by staff in terms of both bringing, putting ourselves in a position where we can bring a design builder onboard, completion of the environmental entitlement process, and the DWP staff is well into their process of defining both the requirements and providing the design for that facility.
Right. And on the design part from our side on the substation, in a year from now, Lawa will have their requirements that they need to move forward with their civil work and the likes of that. In the meantime, we'll be working on our equipment designs while they're doing their work. So it's all, it all matches.
Provided you guys can commit to doing quarterly reports to the council, I think it sounds like a good plan to start.
Well, we appreciate the council's motion because it does put more priority from both sides in this very vital issue. So we appreciate the attention that's been placed by the council.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I know Mr. Buscano is eager to ask another question, but I promised Mr. Corretto to go next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as Mr. Bonin mentioned, with some irony, we introduced this motion back in September, and then in December, Atlanta had an 11-hour outage, which, if you take all the ripple effects into effect, may have impacted millions of people all over the world. And we had our own little outage in February, which I think was an hour or two in duration and probably at the right time, so it didn't have the same kind of impact by good fortune. It sounds like we're doing a lot of stuff on the front line to make unreliability less of a problem, but how much have we done or are we doing to add redundancy to it? So the first-line system blacks you out, but ideally, we'd have generators in place, or we'd have electric storage from solar energy or other sources to back us up. Do we have a backup plan in place? Should we have an Atlanta-style 11, 12-hour blackout?
In our emergency reaction plan for LAX, we established years ago a format for which we would have certain terminals that would be 100% backed up by generators. And that is still a viable option for us, both Terminal 2 and part of Tom Bradney International Terminal, and the new midfield satellite concourse will have the ability to, under a catastrophic event, the ability to run 100% of their functions within those terminals. To try and put emergency power to provide 100% of the needs of each one of the terminals would be space prohibitive and cost prohibitive at this time. However, we are looking at ways to use the cup, as was already brought up, to maybe use some of that power that we can convert over to one of our other terminals. The point that you're making, I believe, is that can we keep LAX open in a catastrophic event? And that has opened our eyes very wide. We are making sure that each one of those emergency generators and all the connectivity to the equipment and to the facilities that we believe is there, is there. We're not trusting, we're validating the capability of operating LAX at a reduced level if we have a catastrophic event. So we are taking it very, very seriously.
Have we looked at electric storage at all?
And that's one of the things that we're looking at from a solar point of view, from a microgrid point of view. And those are things that hopefully the summit will get us a lot more ideas, and we will implement them as quickly as possible. But a microgrid is not something you can go down to Home Depot and hook in. It's something that will take some pretty definitive planning to do. But you can rest assured, from our point of view, it's high priority in both our funding as well as our execution.
I just wanted to add that air traffic control and airfield lighting is also 100% backed up by generators. So our airfield can continue to operate in terms of both departing and arriving aircraft, and the FAA and the tower can continue to have full function and operation.
And I think Atlanta's power outage was originally caused by a fire, although I'm not sure they figured out what the origin of that was. Have we talked to LAFD and emergency management, and are we roping them into this process?
Yes. In fact, from our point of view, the fire and our security are part of our task force for power reliability and emergency power response. And from the Atlanta point of view, even though Georgia Power still has not issued an official statement, I had the opportunity to, like I said, to go to Atlanta and to visualize what happened, and it was almost like a grenade went off in the tunnel. And we still, they still haven't officially said what it was, but they had both of their service trunk lines within inches of each other. So when that anomaly, whatever it was, happened, there was obviously an arcing, an explosion, and it caused a catastrophic event. We are not in that type of situation. We don't have our two service trunk lines in one location for distribution. But with RSX coming onboard, we are looking at the possibility of an RSN, which is the one that we're on now, as our backup in case there is a catastrophic event with our RSX that we're proposing to build, so that we do have some degree of backup if there is some type of catastrophic event. And as someone said earlier, no one thought in Atlanta that they would ever have an issue like this. And it takes sometimes a catastrophic event to open up our eyes.
So, Councilman, I'm sorry, just to reemphasize, Eric Hartman, Power Engineering, just reemphasize what Bob Gilbert just said. You know, Atlanta had all of their power going through this tunnel where that explosion occurred. And for our system and our configuration, we're spread out over multiple circuits feeding multiple terminals. So there's not really a possibility of that happening in our situation, the way we're currently configured from the power system distribution standpoint. It doesn't take away from the fact that, as Bob has mentioned before, that they too need to make sure that they've got UPS and generation capacity to basically support themselves if we do have some sort of interruption on our side. But that, we think that we're still pretty well situated. Also, when RSX goes into effect, currently, right now, we have a mixture of overhead and underground distribution system. But when we go to RSX, everything will be underground, which will eliminate a very large portion of the disruptions that LAX sees.
And Councilman, I want to assure you also that we don't have, Georgia doesn't have what we have in California, and that is the possibility of an earthquake. And we're looking at that as a catastrophic event related to gas distribution to our cup, as well as disturbance to our underground cabling. So that's why we're looking at this from a holistic point of view, to make sure that we address all of the possibilities.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And if I can, and lastly, I still struggle with one of the action item numbers, number seven, as it relates to the backup generator. You know, the motion before us indicates in three years, from 2013, 2016, Lawa experienced 85 power outages. So why are we still assessing available backup generators? We need to provide additional standby generators, but I see that as part of the long-term mitigation and not like immediate action.
Let me just-
So help me understand that.
There were 85 events. And an event for us, like the one that most recently occurred, for us, it was a dip in voltage. It wasn't an interruption in power. That dip in voltage caused our systems to drop off, and those that needed manual reset were reset manually. Those that would reboot it automatically, automatically began to reboot and reset. And so power, a generator would not have had a chance to even come on in that type of event. And that is really what our big vulnerability is right now. It's those types of events. It's not a 10-minute, 20-minute, two-hour interruption of power. It's these anomalies that are occurring within the system that, as was pointed out, the overhead lines have this susceptibility to a Mylar balloon that will cause an arc that causes a dip on the features that come to the airport, and that dip causes lights to blink, computers to drop off, escalators to stop. And then we deploy resources to restart them because power is still there. It was just through that voltage dip.
But there is a plan moving forward to provide additional standby generators.
There is. And that is in terms of where there is a complete interruption to power, and we need to respond to that. And so we need to be clear that there's two different types of events that we're trying to protect ourselves against. One is the dips that just cause disruption, and then the event where there is an actual interruption of power.
Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate it.
Is that all the questions? Okay, well, colleagues, I think this is a really important issue for our city. So I think we need to continue this item to monitor the progress and continue to get reports and updates. So I'd like to move that the Energy Committee, if the Chair of TTC, TTT?
T3.
Concur. We should continue this item for future discussion. Is there any objections? None? Okay, that will be the order, and that adjourns our meeting. Thank you very much.